Hi, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Monday, May 8th, 2017 regular school board meeting of the Lake County School Board. If we would first begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, good evening, everybody, and once again, welcome. Mrs. Carnegie, I think you have a few folks to introduce tonight.
Yes, good evening, we do. First, I'd like to welcome Montana Henson from Eustis High School. Welcome. Montana is a senior at Eustis High School, and over the course of her high school career has been enrolled in many AP courses, of which she has scored very well. She has been involved with the Student Government Association in a leadership role, the Beta Club, National Honor Society, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Jefferson Club, School Advisory Council, School Improvement Plan Committee, High Q Club, and volleyball team. Wow. She has been actively involved in community service through the clubs she's participated in, and she has held a job outside of school. So, welcome, Montana. We look forward to hearing from you in a few minutes. I'd also like to introduce our school-related employee finalist, Caroline Thompson. She is the school nurse from Minneola Charter Elementary School. So, welcome to you. Ms. Thompson focuses on prevention of illness, early detection, and correction of health problems. This includes health assessment knowledge and proper referral services. With her 22 years of nursing experience, she is a very, as she is a first responder for any medical emergencies at the school, has reduced the number of students being unnecessarily sent home by about 20 percent, and has not missed a single day of work since she was hired two years ago, except to attend approval, or approved training or mandatory county nurse meetings. Wow.
Well done.
And also with us tonight is Rookie Teacher of the Year finalist Evelyn Guzman from Triangle Elementary School. So, welcome. Ms. Guzman is a fourth-grade teacher at Triangle. For, she's been there for the past two and a half years. And when it comes to teaching, she focuses on what she calls "the three I's," intentional, innovative, and impactful. "Being intentional in my purpose for teaching helps me think about my students and how I am helping to raise a generation that will impact the future of this country," she wrote. "Being innovative, I like to incorporate new ideas and techniques and invest time in multiple means of representation that can reach all styles of learners. Being impactful in the lives of my students means not just focusing on their academic successes, but their personal growth and development as well." Welcome to you, Ms. Guzman.
That's a great group of guests we have tonight. And I bet you have some updates you'd like to share from the district as well.
I do, and we have a video this evening. So, as we get ready for that, many of our schools celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week last week. This is actually the nationally-recognized week, and so we have other schools that'll be celebrating this week as well. And so, in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, we have a short video just to highlight just a few of our many amazing teachers.
My favorite teacher is Ms. Graham Van.
Thank you.
My name is Samari Vazquez. I am a fifth-grade reading and social studies teacher here at Beverly Chores Elementary.
My name is Aaliyah Killian. I work at Oak Park Middle School, and I'm the ESC School Specialist for grades six through eight.
Teresa Graham Van, Oak Park Middle School, grade seven civics.
She asked why we act the way that we do, like with a substitute or with her, how it's different. And I said that the reason that we act better with her is because we are afraid to disappoint her, and we just like, we know that our expectations have to be high for her, because, you know, we appreciate her. And then she said that it was really nice, and I almost made her cry. And it just like really made me feel better that I made her happy, because I like to make her happy.
The most challenging thing, I would say, is when I see the students give up on themselves, and when they can't, when they don't see the person that I see in front of them, that is the most challenging thing for me, is when they don't realize how great they really are.
I come from a family of teachers, so there's quite a few teachers in my family. And growing up, I got to see from my mother and my grandmother, you know, what it was like to be a teacher on a day-to-day basis. And I honestly cannot think of many more professions that are as impactful and important. I think teachers don't always get the recognition, or the prestige, or the perks, but there honestly are not very many other professions in the world that are as meaningful. I truly believe that.
Thank you for getting me through this year, because you know I wouldn't be able to do it without you.
Well, just that little eight-second clip, that it's, it's, it makes me feel amazing. It really does. And, yeah, wow, I'm kind of at a loss for words right now. That's, that's really special. I appreciate it very much.
I appreciate all this, all of the stuff that you do for our classroom. Wonderful teacher.
It makes me feel very proud of her, of all of them, because I know I've, I've put my little, a little something in their hearts and in their minds. And it, it makes it, it makes it all worth it. It really does. It's, I wouldn't change my profession for anything in the world. I would not change my career. It's, it's rewarding, like I said, in every second of the day. You get these little surprises in your life, and it's, it's worthwhile.
Ms. Graham, I want to thank you for always being there for me. And I know that, like, I'm kind of difficult in class, but you're, you're always there for me, and you always tell me that I can get through this. And whenever, like, I, you know, think that I'm not going to be able to do something, you always push me and say that I can do this. And I, I like how you make sure that I reach the goals that you know that I can achieve, and that, you know, you're just an overall, a really good teacher. And I hope you continue teaching, because a lot of other students would appreciate how you teach.
Sorry. It makes me feel like it's worth it. That is why I teach, that's exactly what I teach. A lot of these kids don't have the family's support, and that's why I do it.
This is just one of the several clips that have aired on our Facebook page in celebration of our teachers, and I hope that you'll join me in thanking them and paying tribute to all of our teachers and staff whose passion and dedication enhances each child's tomorrow. Opening minds, touching hearts, and shaping the future. Thank you to all of our wonderful teachers.
I know for tonight's agenda, we have a couple of emergency items to add. Would you like to share those, and let us know if you've got anything else to pull?
At your seat, you have a revised copy of 9.02, so I'll make mention of that. And we do have two emergency items. Number one is the notification of the Administrative Instructional and Professional Managerial Transaction List for the 17-18 school year. And number two is an updated 16-17 district staffing plan. And we will address those prior to approval of the consent agenda.
Right, that's right. And we'll go ahead and deem those emergency items due to the time-sensitive, time sensitivity of the personnel matters there, and also the staffing plan. And the reason we're going to address that before the consent agenda tonight is because there's a direct effect with 9.01, which requires us to make revision to the staffing plan before we approve that item. So, hopefully, we'll remember to get that in the right order tonight. Any other changes or modifications to tonight's agenda?
There are none.
Board members, do you have anything you'd like to see pulled?
8.01.
8.01. All right, very good. We'll do 8.01. We'll do that one separately. Anything else? All right, we have one public input card, but it is not specific to any of the items on the agenda, so we'll, we'll address that one when we get to the public input section. With that, we'll move to the approval of the amendment, approval of the minutes. We've got a couple on there.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the School Board Workshop dated April 3rd, 2017, and the School Board Meeting dated April 10th, 2017.
All right, board members, there's a recommendation from the superintendent. Any motions?
Motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie.
Any questions or comments before voting? All right, seeing none, let's put it to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And the approval of those minutes carries 5-0. And that brings us to my favorite part, representation tonight. First off is the recognition for the top scholars for Lake County Schools, and is that, I see Dr. Wykoff, your, your name is on the agenda, but it's, ah-huh. All right, very good.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Carnegie, Chairman Todd, everyone else on the honorable School Board visitors, thank you. I am so honored. I'm Chris Landry. I'm the Director of Student Services, and I am here tonight to introduce you to the Lake County Schools' top scholar, there's only one of these, for the 15-16 school year. Okay, so this is for last school year. Let me tell you first what it takes to become a top scholar. Each year, a graduating senior from every district in Florida is selected as a top scholar for that district. To even be considered for the award, the student must receive eligibility for Bright Futures Academic Scholar, which is the highest academic award in the Bright Futures ladder. Then, out of all the students in the district who receive the academic scholars, one is selected by the state, who has the highest GPA, highest test scores, and most volunteer hours. The top scholar chosen each year will receive a beautiful trophy, which I have here, and will also receive a monetary award in addition to the Bright Futures monetary award. So, before I introduce our top scholar, I would like to read to you a little biography that was written by her school counselor, Mr. Kent Stevens. I guess I'll go ahead and say her name, because it's, so I want to congratulate, and I'll read this as she's coming up, and I want to congratulate your top scholar for school year 15-16, Lisa Richardson. All right, I'll let you hold this while I read your accolades. So, Mr. Stevens says Lisa Richardson is "one of the brightest students that I have had the pleasure to work with in my 30-plus years as a guidance counselor. During Lisa's four years at Taverries High School, she took and passed 11 advanced placement courses. She graduated last year with a weighted GPA of 5.06, and her class rank was 1 out of 277. Outside the classroom, Lisa was very involved in many clubs and held many leadership positions. She was sophomore class secretary, Hope Club Vice President, Treasurer of the National Honor Society, and Student Government. She played interscholastic volleyball for four years and was the co-captain. She is presently attending University of South Florida, majoring in Biology, and has a 4.0 at this time." I would also like to recognize, because we know behind every top scholar is a wonderful family, so Lisa's mother is here with us this evening, Mrs. Richardson. And not only a strong family, but strong educators. And tonight, we have Dr. Boyd representing all the wonderful educators from Taverries High School. Congratulations. Would you like?
We would love to personally congratulate. Yes, please, come on, come on back. Next, I believe Carmen Cullen-Batt will recognize the Scott Strong Memorial Scholarship recipients.
Thank you, Chairman Todd, School Board Members, Superintendent. This is always a special, special place in my heart when we can come up and recognize the scholarship winners for Scott Strong. And with us today, we have Steve Strong, Scott's brother. If you'd come forward. We also have Dean Simmons, who serves as the chairman of the committee that selects these scholars. And Stephanie Strong will be our spokesperson tonight. Stephanie.
Thank you. The Scott Strong Memorial Scholarship Committee is pleased to announce and recognize the six recipients of $7,000 in scholarship award this year. Committee members include myself, Chairman Dean Simmons, Stephen Strong, Lisa Ricketson, Lisa Jo-Drey, and Carmen Cullen. Scott served as the Lake County School Board Member from 2000-2008, and was named the State of Florida School Board Member of the Year in 2008. He was a staunch supporter of his family, his community, and education. To date, the Scott Strong Memorial Scholarship Fund has distributed $80,250 to 85 recipients. So, I'm going to announce the $1,000 winners this year. First, we have Riley Brooks. She attends Eustis High School, attending Abraham Baldwin Agricultural College, and she's going to be seeking a degree in agricultural management. Next, we have Bernadette Navaret Gonzalez. She attends Umatilla High School, and she'll be attending Lake Sumter and transferring to possibly Flagler College, seeking a degree in public communications. Next is Montana Joe Henson. She attends Eustis High School. She's seeking a degree in pre-med and continuing on to UNC at Chapel Hill to become a doctor. Next is Brandon Silva. I think he's dressed sharply tonight for us. He attends Lake Minneola High School, and he's planning to attend UCF, seeking a degree in computer engineering, in hopes for a career in robotic limb augmentations. And the last gentleman in our $1,000 category is Adam Trentholm. He attends Leesburg High School, and he is planning to attend Florida Polytechnic University, seeking a computer engineering degree. And finally, our $2,000 winner this year is Melody Dove. She attends South Lake High School, and she's planning on attending the University of Florida, seeking a degree in pre-professional biology, and continuing on to become a doctor as well. And finally, we just wanted to make everybody aware that the Educational Foundation's annual Scott Strong Memorial Scholarship Golf Tournament will be held on October 20th this year at Mission Inn. And proceeds from this tournament will be used to replenish our scholarship account. Thank you all.
Wait, one more. All right, now we would love the opportunity to personally congratulate all of you. Please, come on down. That brings us to the public input portion of our agenda tonight, and we have one public input card that comes from Stuart Klap. So, please, come on down.
Well, good evening. Couple of different things. On the eve of our LCEA Annual Banquet, and some of you will be attending, some I know you won't be able to, and we will miss you. At the annual banquet, we do our installation of officers, and we have five scholarship recipients, each of $1,000, and we will honor our retirees as well. I was talking to an international education expert last week, and as we were talking, we determined that with the teacher shortage, we don't have a recruitment issue problem, we have a retention issue problem. Just this year, we started over 420 new teachers, and as more than one annual contract teacher told me, that they were told, "They're going to advertise my position, and if they can't find anybody better, they'll call me back." We resort to limiting transfers to cover up poor management and turnover in some of our schools. I have a secret for some of our administrators. There's not a plethora of teachers sitting at home waiting to apply to your school. There are not out there. So, the best thing would be to take your teachers, train them, work with them, support them, and then they will become a very dedicated and loyal workforce, which is what we all want for our students and children. And according to the NEA, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, yes, we have a lot of hard-working teachers. We have a lot who've really worked very hard for student achievement this year. The job fair, from what I understand, was, was limited, had some issues. Some teachers looking at wanting to transfer were basically told that they could not enter and talk to principals or APs, even though they had appointments. But there again, that goes to show that teachers want to go to good management. If there's an issue, or if there's a school that has people leaving, well, actually, coming from, from the management point of view, and we all know, competition is great. If you're the manager that everybody wants to come to, your school, that means you get to pick the best of the best. If you're the manager that everyone wants to leave your school, then that indicates there's some management training needs that may need to take place. So, y'all, thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and thank you very much. Have a good one.
Thank you very much. Brings us to our report section, and our first one on the list belongs to Montana Henson. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of Lake County School Board, Superintendent Carnegie, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Montana Henson, and I'm honored to be here, speaking on behalf of Eustis High School. It's a privilege to speak on behalf of over a hundred thousand, no, 100,000, I apologize, 1,100 students, faculty, staff, and administration of our school. Truly, the city of bright tomorrows begins in our two elementary schools, Eustis Heights and Eustis Elementary. We then become Mustangs at the Eustis Middle School, and I stand before you, or I sit before you today, as a proud Panther. If I were to attempt to tell you all of the great things that have occurred this year, well, I'd be here all night. We offer a plethora of advanced placement courses, along with providing students with the opportunity to dual enrollment, a CTC program, that is, pardon my pun, one of the great hands-on experiences any student can have. Working in conjunction with our ESC department, we grew in serving healthy vegetables on campus. Sports, well, you all know our reputation. No one messes with the Panther. This year, we advanced well into the district playoffs in football, basketball, volleyball, softball, and baseball. We have one of the top lady golfers in the state, Julia Towne. On the track, Destiny Snape and Malik Alexander represented us in states. And while the number of sports scholarships being racked up are plentiful. And then there are the other extracurricular activities, the many clubs that impact our school and community in such positive ways. There, too, we have left our mark, beginning with our student government, who, with the help of local businesses such as the United Southern Bank and Publix, again delivering 20 Thanksgiving baskets to students and families in our community. Associated with student government is the Jefferson Awards Club, which received the 2017 Gold Leadership Award this year at district competition. Our National Honor Society participated in a dozen service projects this year, from the Open Door Homeless Shelter Drive, fall festivals at several of our Eustis Elementary Schools, and the Color Run for Alzheimer's, and so much more. Our National Beta Club continued its Smarty Panthers program, tutoring elementary students twice a week, participated in the Cleanup Eustis Program, ran a blanket drive, multiple clothing drives, and canned food drives. And in conjunction with our National Honor Society, extended our memorial in a very moving ceremony in our courtyard, honoring the sons of Eustis who have given their all to defend and protect our freedom and that of the rest of the world. Selling handmade jewelry, I'm sure you saw us at every event in town, with veterans from World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Desert Storm, and S.H.I.E.L.D., and some recent EHS graduates in uniform. Our hearts were stirred with patriotic fervor. If you missed it, the Daily Commercial ran an article on the memorial this past Sunday. Our key club, what can I say? Under City Commissioner and EHS faculty member, Ms. Janon Thompson, leadership, these young men and women made us proud as they worked to serve the community, as you could find them volunteering wherever there was a need. Shall I go on? Volunteering at the recent moving Vietnam War Memorial, George Fest, First Friday, the Elks, nursing homes, homeless shelters, you name it, and you'll find one of us there, serving our community. I guess you can tell I'm not one to brag much, but I can think of no community, no group of individuals, who came together this year, and it's all because of the opportunities you've provided us with. I'm proud to say I'm a Eustis Panther, that when tomorrow arrives, I will always remember the challenges and opportunities, the trials and tribulations, but most importantly, my friends and mentors at EHS. In this community that make life worth living, and what truly has provided me with an opportunity to, pardon me as I paraphrase Henry David Thoreau, build the foundations under my dream of becoming a pediatric anesthesiologist. For nowhere else is tomorrow's dawn brighter. Thank you.
Excellent. You certainly have a lot to be proud about at that school, and I saw your very proud mother videotaping all of that, so she did great. She did awesome. And I think I saw your very proud principal here earlier, too. Oh, there, there she is. She moved on me. There you are. Well, she represented you all very well. Next, we are going to hear from one of our Rookie Teacher of the Year finalists, Evelyn Guzman.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking time off from your busy schedules to be here today. Good evening, county members, people from the community, school board members, Superintendent Carnegie. I'm very honored to be here today. Very honored to even have been selected Rookie Teacher of the Year. I'm striving very hard to make everyone proud, especially Ms. Luca, right over here, our previous teacher. Wow, how do I come behind such a great introduction from Montana here? And how do you compare an elementary school to a high school? But let me tell you all the wonderful things that we do here at Triangle Elementary. Triangle Elementary is involved with many, many wonderful, we, we call them wonderful Wednesdays. They're special academic initiatives that we have at our school, where we provide students with opportunities to have exposure to a diversity of resources that are both cultural and professional exemplars from our community. They have examples that would include like a Career Day for our fifth graders, where they're teaching them how to be college and career-ready. Transportation Day for our kindergartners, where they're exposed to multiple modes of transportation as part of a social studies unit. Third-grade elections, where they're taught about the electoral process at a local, state, and national level, as they become citizens of our country. We have other volunteer activities, such as Donuts for Dad, where we get a lot of parent participation to come out. This year, we had over 500 participants come out to our Donuts for Dad event. We have Muffins for Mom coming up, where we already have nearly 700 RSVPs for those participants who attend our school. We have many family reading and literacy nights. We do science and STEM nights at our school, where our parents come out to participate with their students. with their students and see what the school is really all about. We also have a great chorus program. If you've never heard our chorus, you ought to come out and hear them sing. They just had our spring concert at Triangle Elementary on April 25th, and from there, our fifth-grade honor students in the chorus participated at the concert that happened recently at Lake Sumter this past Friday. We're also in the process of recognizing our Teacher Appreciation Week. Congratulations to all those teachers out there, and I honestly appreciate every teacher out there, even myself being a teacher, being in that seat before. But we have lots of community members and business partners that have really stepped up this year to donate food and prizes, to make it such a wonderful week for our teachers. I give a shout-out to them today, and I honor them today. Another great thing that has happened is that we are a STEM school. We've been a STEM school for several years now, and our students have been preparing all year long for the STEM Bowl that is currently taking place this week as we speak. Our third, fourth, and fifth graders are currently participating in that. Along with our volunteering, many of our chorus students, as well as other students on campus, volunteer. The chorus goes out to places like Avante and Waterman Village, and just serve in the community in other ways. As a result of the volunteering happening at our school, our school has been awarded the Golden Scholar, Golden School Award. And the Golden School Award, if you're not sure what it is or have not heard of it yet, it relates to our volunteer hours, and our school has volunteered more hours than our current student enrollment of 730 students. We've also received the Five Star Award because of all the community service we had. We keep a current SAC Student Advisory Council Board. We have many family involvement events, and more than 80% of our school staff participates in volunteer trainings. As well as the high school there, we have A-Heidronic Towers, and our students are also able to get an open salad bar at least two times a week, so to provide a little bit more of healthy food choices for our students. We have a beautiful bar-to-fry garden that's maintained by our students, actually maintained by our ESC students. So it's a great endeavor for them. Our ESC students and our staff work very hard in maintaining a beautiful garden that our parents can enjoy when they come out for lunch and other activities at the school with our students. And recently, we've started a, before school tutoring program for many of our ELL students, just to get them prepared in math, reading, and Rosetta Stone with small-group focused attention. These are many, many of the things that we've done at our school. The best thing of all, I think, is that we're all done with FSA testing. And the students have done really well, but there is just a continuation of things, and we would be here all night if we hit on every, every single thing that these schools do. But thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have one of our School Related Employee of the Year finalists, Caroline Thompson.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the superintendent, the school board. I actually have our principal and vice-principal out there for Mineola Elementary that is Mine was a little different. I was here, I think, to speak about the school nursing and how important it is to have the school nurse vigilant. When I first started working at Mineola, it was August of 2014, and I really didn't know what it was like. Always worked as a staff nurse, I didn't know what it was like to work with small children, even though I'm a mother and a grandmother. But when I got in there, it was such a caring attitude with everybody in there. We worked together, the teachers, the TAs, the superintendents, all of us worked together as a team, helping one another, and they had a lot of processes I had to learn. And the next year, I was able to try to build upon those processes and try to figure out how to do it better. One of the things that's fantastic that we do at Mineola, and I think we do pretty much everywhere, is keeping the lines of communication open, because a lot of the problems you encounter is not communicating with the parent. Getting the teacher and the parent and the student and their needs together, it's important. As a school nurse, I know there are schools that don't have nurses, and I can't imagine it. With over 1,100 students at Mineola, I can't picture not having a nurse there. There are so many things that happen, that you need to be vigilant for. You need a student that's alert and oriented and ready to learn when they get into that classroom, and being able to identify those who are sick, those that have sickness that are potential to carry on, to interfere with their learning, and I guess just being there. I'm not used to speaking in front of people, okay? You can tell this is not a nurse thing. We can fix your boo-boos and give you an ice pack, but to actually stand up and have to, you know, speak to people, it is important. I am definitely blessed to be here today and honored to be just one of the finalists. I can't believe it. I haven't even been in the county that long. It's fantastic. And I think it's important that we recognize our teachers for what they do, because they do an excellent job, and they're very vigilant, taking care of our students. That's the big thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate both of you and your dedication to our district and all the work that you do. Absolutely, thank you very much. Next, we'll invite Carmen Cullen-Batt up one more time to deliver the Educational Foundation report.
Thank you. Since I last reported in April to the board about what the foundation had been up to, we have really been up to some things. We had our Take Stock in Children contract signing on April the 13th. It was attended by over 251 students, were inducted into the class of 2021, and they'll receive a scholarship at graduation. The Night of Stars was attended by over 400 on April the 19th. Ms. Thomas from Carver was named Employee of the Year, and Ms. Sigler from Gray Middle was named Volunteer of the Year. Century Link was in the house, and they awarded and surprised four teachers, and those teachers received over $17,800 in STEM, our Teacher in Technology, grants. Mike Stone was honored with the Scott Strong Volunteer of the Year Award. B. Grassel won the Foundation Board Member of the Year, and Insight Credit Union was named Lake County Schools Business Partner of the Year. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, we've had on our skates going with ice cream socials to aid of the Leesburg Fruitland Park and Village of Schools, and that was sponsored by Campus USA Credit Union, and so we've got some ice cream left over if anybody has an interest. The Take Stock in Children graduation breakfast was held on April 25th. It was attended by 150, and 30 proud members of the class of 2017 left with a four prepaid tuition card in their hot little hands. Century Link Top Scholar Luncheon was April the 27th, and it was attended by 250, and 81 students from all of our eight high schools were honored. Ladies for Education was last Friday, and it is shaking out to be very profitable. The winners donated back over $1,000 in unrestricted funds to the various schools, and in addition, a $1,000 scholarship was awarded to Erin Ald from Leesburg High School, and that was in honor of Linda Colemeyer, who the tournament is named after. We have the Lake County School Retirement Dinner scheduled for May 25th at Lake Sumter. Apple Mart has had 672 teacher visits this year, with a distribution of $49,650. The stores will be open this Wednesday and next, and then will be closed over the summer for restocking. And our plans for restocking those three stores is through the donations that we received from our Red for Ed campaign, which kicks off in July, and we are already in the process of getting partners that'll be collection sites. And I got a call today that they're doing a speedboat poker run to collect supplies, so that ought to be interesting. We also have our Back to School Fairs. There'll be one in Taveries again, one in Claremont, and one in Leesburg, and those are scheduled for August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. This past week, Duke Energy awarded $13,500 in grants to seven schools for STEM projects, and that brings the total of Duke Energy funding for this year in STEM grants to $28,000. Unlocked, which was the community-involved grant program that kicked off last year, will be kicking off before the close of school this year. The teachers will be asked to submit a concept for funding ideas. Those ideas will be vetted, and we'll select the top five concepts. Then they will move on to the development stage, and in the development stage, we secure a CEO, a CFO, and a PR professional to work with that teacher over the summer to develop the idea, to make sure that the model is a sustainable business idea, that it's able to be duplicated, and that it's sound. And then, in October, these teams will come and do their community pitch to community judges, and the judges will determine where the funding goes. Last year, out of the five that presented, three were fully funded at over $65,000, and the foundation is poised financially to do that again this year. Stepping Out for Education, which is our local Dancing with the Stars, dancers have been named, and they include Doug Childers, who is the CEO for Lasterwell Insurance, Leah Connor, who owns the design firm in Leesburg, Tim Simpson, who is the owner of Renew Days Spa, Gail Baker, who is the area president of Reunion Bank of Florida, Michael Herrera, who is the ED for the Community Foundation of South Lake, and our very own AP from Cypress Ridge Elementary, Nicole Ruchard. So we are real excited, they're getting ready to start training, and they'll be ready to perform for you on July 28th and 29th at Mission Inn. Lastly, I am excited to introduce Audra Dick. We have searched long and hard since December of last year for Audra. She started on Friday during Ladies Four and even came back, so we were very excited. Audra will be our Foundation Community Liaison. She is a recent graduate from Florida Southern, and she has a degree in communications. She's interned with a marketing firm specializing in social media, and with the Pulp Museum of Art specializing in volunteer recruitment. So Audra, would you please stand away?
Audra Dick. Thank you. Are there any questions? No?
Thank you. A lot going on. Mr. Johnson, anything from the attorney's side?
Just one thing. I believe that some time ago, I notified you that the Florida Education Association had filed a charge of race and age discrimination against not only Lake County School Board, but a number of other school boards as a result of the implementation of the best and brightest scholarship program. I received a notification last week that FEA had requested notice of a right to sue from EEOC. What that essentially means is that you would do that in the event that you were getting ready to go forward and file the suit, or you were getting ready to go forward and drop the suit, one way or the other. I'm assuming, based on what I understood happened in the legislation, that they're getting ready to file the suit and proceed with it, so once filed, we'll have 20 days to respond, and we'll just come back to you at that time and decide what to do. I've already been in contact with a number of school board attorneys from other counties who are also waiting for the same thing to happen, and I assume there'll be some joint discussion of how to handle the issue if it gets to that point.
All right. Thank you. We don't have any unfinished business on the agenda, so at this point, we'll address the two emergency items we've added tonight. First one being an update to the 1617 District Staffing Plan. All right.
Correct. I recommend approval of the Administrative Instructional and Professional Managerial Personnel Transaction List for 1718.
All right. Here's a motion by Bill and a second by Stephanie. All right, so we're looking at the notification, the Administrative Instructional and Professional Managerial Personnel Transactions List for 1718. Any questions on that before we vote? All right, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. That carries 5-0. And the other item is the...
Is the 1617 Updated District Staffing Plan. I recommend approval.
All right, there's a recommendation from the superintendent with a motion by Bill and a second by Sandy. Any questions or comments before voting on this one? All right, then let's put it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And that carries 5-0 as well. And now, we'll come to the consent agenda.
Yes, and I am recommending approval of the consent agenda, items 8.02 through 10.12.
All right, there's a recommendation from the superintendent on the consent agenda. Motion by Bill and a second by Sandy. Once again, any questions or comments? All right, and let's vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, the consent agenda carries 5-0, and now we'll go back to 8.01, which was pulled for separate consideration, Plumbing Preventative Maintenance. Bill, I think you had a comment on this one.
I just have a comment about it. This was on our agenda a few weeks ago. This is a contract for $214,000. It is being awarded to a company by the name of Frank Gay out of Orlando, and this is a renewal of a contract. The superintendent pulled it at the time. There has been some changes in personnel, and genuinely, my concern initially, and still is, is that when we have contracts like that of this amount, that we bid them and we include local vendors, and that was not on the list. And so, the superintendent is in full agreement of us moving forward, that purchasing should seek out local vendors to bid on projects, and however, at this time, with changes that are being made in purchasing, that I'm willing to vote for it, but I just wanted to speak to the fact that this much money and the fact that we had no local, and it was just a renewal of a contract, will not be practiced in the future, I would hope. That's all.
Chairman, could I...
Yes.
Also, Mr. Mathias, I added with that in our discussion with the cabinet and the superintendent that I would like for us, this is for special items and things, but a lot of times, they are called out when we could send our own people to do the work, and so I've asked the superintendent and Mr. Carr to look into that, that we don't use them unless it's an emergency item or something that we are not capable of doing because we don't have the equipment, and they agreed.
Well done.
Can I also add? I fully agree with the local vendors, and I've brought that up quite often, and it's something I hope will be worked on. But I wanted to point out that this is a, this money that we're setting aside, I had an extensive discussion on it, and the money is set aside to be used based, it is, the amount is based on last year's amount, but it is being set aside as an emergency fund for plumbing. And, I'm sorry, I have, I have a cold. And therefore, the idea is that Mr. Carr has set into place provisions so that we won't use the full amount of the funds, and so I've asked him, and he's agreed to, you know, give us updates, he offered quarterly updates, as to how well we're doing at not using this amount of money so that we could, you know, purpose it to another purpose. So the idea is to, that this becomes a true emergency fund, as opposed to a quick phone call because it's easy, and that the reorganization of people will allow us to handle our own plumbing needs within-house.
This one must have been a popular topic in those one-on-one board member meetings, because this is one that I had also brought up as well, and I walked away with a good sense of confidence from Mr. Carr that he was looking at the efficiency of this and the idea of using our own folks whenever possible. So I certainly appreciate that, so, you know, start as locally as possible and then branch out. So, Mr. Mathias, I echo your concerns with trying to seek out local when we can't use our own employees for that, so. Very good. You have a recommendation for us?
I do. I recommend approval of 8.01, the renewal of the Plumbing Preventative Maintenance Contract.
All right, very good. There's a recommendation from the superintendent with a motion by Bill and a second by Sandy. Y'all are going quick. Any other questions or comments before voting? All right, then let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And that carries 5-0. Bringing us to the discussion portion of the agenda, where we have the final approval of a secondary boundary for the K-5 portion of Spring Creek Charter School.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the matter before the board is the final approval of a secondary border, boundary, excuse me, for the K-5 portion of Spring Creek Charter School. If there's anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to speak to this topic, then please come forward to one of the podiums at this time. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone coming forward, and believe it appropriate to close the public hearing portion.
All right, thank you very much. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend approval of the secondary boundary for the K-5 portion of Spring Creek Charter School.
So moved. There's a motion by Kristi and a second by Bill on this one. Any other questions or comments before voting on the final approval? Remember, we saw this one about a month ago, come before us. All right, then let's put it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And that one also carries 5-0. Bringing us to the superintendent's report for the night.
I have unfortunately one letter of condolence that went to the family of... I have unfortunately, one letter of condolence that went to the family of Diane Sampson, the sister-in-law of Doug Major, who's the event specialist for the education foundations. Extend my sympathy to him and his family.
Thank you very much. And board members, we'll go to you all for some comments. Sandy, would you like to start us off?
All right. First of all, tomorrow night at seven o'clock, just in case someone forgets to announce it when it's her time, at Eustace High School softball field, they will be playing for the regional championship representing Lake County in girls' softball. And so, you might want to get there early if you want a good seat. If you want to sit in the cheap seats out there beyond the fence on the hill, you can still see the game, but you won't be able to go in and get drinks unless you want to pay. Also, an update on April Von Maxey. She's up and walking and doing, she's out of ICU and in progressive care, and she's breathing on her own, and we thank the Lord for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Sandy. Kristi, do you have anything to share?
Yes. So, we've been obviously following very closely the legislative session, and it's, it's, it's been a, it's been a ride this year. It's, it's unlike, I've even had legisla, heard legislators say that it's unlike anything they have seen before. We have been working on what we thought was a really good testing bill that reduced testing and many, and helped with VAM and et cetera. Recess was also in the mix. And all of that came together into one train, what's called a train bill, so a bunch of bills put all together on Thursday. And it passed the Senate on Thursday, and we expected it to go to the House on Friday. And instead of it going to the House on Friday, there was a big wait, and then the, the Speaker of the House and the Speaker of the Senate apparently had meetings. And they created what's known as a conforming bill, which I had actually never heard of, so Civics one-on-one. Like, this is a bill that has to do with the budget, basically, and can only be voted up or down. And so, they created an enormous conforming bill that included all educational policy, called seventy-sixty-nine. It includes some really unpopular policy. I won't comment too much on the Best and the Brightest, but it's even being expanded to the Best and the Brightest Principles. Other many millions and millions of dollars and all budget, all, all policy for education is in this huge conforming bill. This bill can only, this bill that came on Friday can only be voted yes or no. It's now passed the House. It's being debated right now in the Senate, and I don't know the outcome. If it passes the Senate, it may be vetoed by the governor, it may not. If it doesn't pass the Senate, it may call in question the budget. We just basically don't know, and I think this is sort of an unprecedented situation, so I'm not sure. I think there's a lot of people who don't quite know what's happening. It's really unfortunate that they, that this, it's unfortunate because there was some good legislation, and there, obviously, now they can't vet anything, they can't make any amendments to anything, they can't change anything. So we'll see what happens and find out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talk about the roller coaster. I felt like we walked in with such an optimistic feeling about the session when we saw some of the early stuff filed, and then to get this at the very last minute.
Yeah, it's very, very disappointing. And it's most disappointing to me because they've been using recess to help sell the bill, which was never the intention of any parent who was advocating for recess. That was very disappointing. There's actually, like, they put out propaganda, which was very frustrating for a person who had been working on recess. Anyway, moving on, I went to the Leesburg High School Academic Excellence Ceremony, which was wonderful. It was great to see so many top students from Leesburg High School. And I, it was the first annual, and somebody not at this, but separately, has pointed out to me that Lake County is really good at first annuals, so I hope this, that there will be a second annual Leesburg High School Academic Excellence Ceremony because it was great. I also attended this Top Scholars Luncheon, and these kids were amazing. They had higher GPAs than were even possible when I went to high school. And I wanted to mention, you mentioned that Eustace High School had a top female golfer, and when I went to Eustace High, I was one of the first students in, in the golfing, golf club. And I was terrible. I, I came in second to last at districts, but I'm very, very glad, that, at which point my dad was like, that's a lot of work. That's a lot of strokes. But I'm really glad that the programs continued over the years and that Eustace High is doing so great. So, thank you, that's all I have.
All right, very good. And Bill, do you have anything?
Just a couple of things. I want to first recognize, again, my amazing ability to read to students. I received all of these thank you cards, Mrs. Watts, which not only does that, not one of them speaks about reading, they thanked me for the book I gave them. But that's okay, I'm good with that. Tomorrow, and again, speaking, speak to the strength of the district and the willingness to participate and support all facets. I had a phone call and an email from Mark Johnson, he's the city manager for Mineola, and a group of developers are coming together, and they had some list of questions. I sent them over to Mr. Fix. Mr. Fix said, I think maybe I should attend since I was going to be the one speaking. So, Mr. Fix, thank you very much for spontaneously and on short notice being able to make that meeting tomorrow. And that's all I've got.
Very good. Stephanie?
I wanted to thank Montana for coming. You represented Eustace High School very well. You're very animated when you speak, and it's wonderful to listen to you, and we wish you good luck in your future endeavors, and congratulations on your scholarship receipts this evening. And Mrs. Guzman, you will always hold a very special place in my heart. It is super proud moment, teacher moment, to see you sitting up here. Please continue to work as hard as I know you will, and I know you'll do great things. And Mrs. Blar was sitting out there supporting you earlier. I did see her out there. I know you're under great care with that administration. I'm just, can't express to you how proud I, of you that I am. And Caroline, thank you too for your service to the district. My mother's a nurse, I know how hard you work to take care of sick kids. Gross, I only like my own, sick kids, not kids in general, let me qualify that. I wanted to say thank you also to Mr. Carr. He's been working with me on a special project and made a lot of time for me last week. And then, Teacher Appreciation Week, I think it's kind of funny, somebody must have known that testing would be coming to a close in Cinco de Mayo, and it's like three weeks left of the school year, Jensen got her very first tardy of the year today. We are dragging across the finish line, but it is in sight. So lots of fun, super events coming up, STEM Bowl. I will be there on Wednesday with a child that's participating, is Addison participating? Oh, okay. So I was hoping to see you there with that, so. Bill, I think that's, I thought, oh, tomorrow night, I know he mentioned Eustace High School Regional, so we'll see you there. The Eustace Service League and Eustace Chamber of Commerce is also hosting Mrs. Carnegie at the Eighteen Eighty-four Restaurant at six-thirty in the evening, so we would invite the general public Eustace area to come and speak with our superintendent. If you haven't had the opportunity yet, she's been very graciously giving of her time lately. I've heard wonderful things from several different focus groups, so, thank you guys.
Well, Bill, I'll give you the secret on getting the thank you card to talk about your reading. The secret is this, at the end of, at the end of any book you read, you should do a magic trick. Because, as mine referred to my reading being out of this world and thanking me for the entertainment, so, well, I'll have to teach you a couple of tricks before you, you go in next time.
Thanks.
Yes, yes, the live rabbit makes a, makes a good touch.
Always is a good one.
Always, always a good one, and never, never fails. I am also looking forward to STEM Bowl this week. I'll actually be volunteering a couple of days on Wednesday and Thursday, so I will see you there then. STEM Bowl is always one of my favorite events, especially when you see the imagination of these, these children play out as they, as they engineer some really creative task, and thinking about the way they, they put these parts together, you go, wow, I would never would have thought about it that way. So it's, it's really a fantastic event, great to see, going on all week, so, and open to the public, you know? So folks should go out and check out what these kids are doing. They'll, they'll definitely amaze you, and so I'm really looking forward to that. And on Teacher Appreciation Week, as I think about my own kids and how the, how their best teachers have impacted their lives and motivated them and inspired them to love learning, I think that for each one of them that touched my student, I know that there are forty-two thousand other students that are being positively impacted throughout our district. I think for that, I'm just eternally grateful, knowing that for every one of my stories as a parent, there's that proud moment that other parents are having. I mean, here, we certainly see a proud parent in the audience, and certainly that can't, I mean, great parenting does so well, but really, you know, having some great teachers along the way doesn't hurt, right? This week, I was, I was reminded of that, reminded of that when I bumped into some students that I had three years ago, who I haven't seen in the last three years. One of my students had moved away at the end of the year when I taught her as a kindergartner, and I ran into her at Waterfront Park of all places. I said, wow, I thought you moved away. She said, well, we're back. And I want to just tell you that the rest of school has been a breeze after going through your kindergarten class. And she's an honor roll student, holding strong, and, and we have that to thank for you. And then I went to my daughter's STEM night at Grassy Lake this week, and I ran into a student who, once again, I taught three years ago, he's like doubled in size, he's twice as tall, it's fantastic, and, and, and once again, just really as proud as he could possibly be about all of his accomplishments. And so, as I, as I think about those students, that's where I just feel eternally grateful for all of our teachers and the work that they're pouring in, because I know for every one of those that I've had the chance to touch in my short period of time of teaching. Some of our teachers have been teaching for decades, and how many hundreds, or if not thousands, of students that they've had a chance to impact? That's the best thing that Lake County does, is we hire people who make miracles happen, and our teachers are those people, some of those people. Certainly, they, they get a lot of support along the way, but my gratitude goes out to all those teachers. One other item I'll, I'll share with you is that on May twenty-second, I unfortunately have a graduation to attend that night, so Stephanie will, will be running the meeting. Make sure you give her a real hard time. And with that, I think we're just about ready for adjournment. Unless anybody has any objections to adjourning for the night? I don't think so. Great, and we stand adjourned.